All right, we will call this meeting to order as the record show the time is six thirty. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Crave here.
Quammy here.
Schneider here.
Cummings here.
Sacks here.
Yurgis here.
All right, I have in front of me a proper verification, verification, excuse me, of meeting notices being posted. Brings us to the agenda. Are there any changes, additions, alterations to the agenda this evening?
Uh, yeah, wasn't there a special meeting? I don't think I was in attendance, um, the Monday one, Monday, the twenty eighth? Would that be on here?
The minutes aren't done for that, so it won't be on here until they're finished.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, perfect.
Go on the next meeting.
Okay, sounds great.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I will second. Okay, I've got a motion by Ms. Quammy, seconded by Mr. Crave, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries on a seven oh vote, six oh vote, excuse me. And... That'll bring us to the approval of the previous meeting minutes. First up would be the regular board meeting on Wednesday, August ninth, twenty twenty-three. Any noted changes, corrections to the minutes as presented?
Can I bundle them together or do they have to be separate?
Well, they're listed out in action items separately, so...
Separate?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds great. Cummings will make a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from August ninth.
Holly will second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Quammy, to approve the board meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Brings us to the regular board meeting minutes from Wednesday, August ninth, in the closed session.
Cummings will make a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from the closed session from August ninth.
Crave will second.
I've got Mr. Yurgis digging into the punch. So I've got a motion by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve the meeting minutes as presented for the closed session on August ninth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries on a six oh votes vote. And finally, the minutes from the policy committee meeting on Thursday, August twenty-fourth.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Cummings will second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Ms. Quammy, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the policy committing, policy committee meeting minutes from Thursday, August twenty-fourth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, six oh votes vote. Brings us to, uh, board reports. Uh, this evening, we have Mateo Sepullo present to give us the report. So the floor is yours, Mateo.
Good evening, everyone. I am Mateo Sepullo. Thanks for having us talk this evening. I'm a senior here at Waterloo High School. I'm going to give a quick overview of what the student body's up to over the summer and the start of the school year. Over the summer, we saw activity from FBLA and FFA. Mateo and David Sepullo went with Miss Dose to Atlanta for the FBLA National Leadership Conference, where we all got certified from the ASK Business Institute in Business Ethics, and also learned a lot about business and leadership. FFA shut traps in Rome, Wisconsin, and showed dairy, beef, sheep, and goats at the Jefferson County Fair, Dodge County Fair, and the State Fair, winning many awards. Alyssa Shesina, Ian Spoke, and Alyssa Jenkey went to Washington DC for the Washington Leadership Conference, and also did some great sightseeing there as well. Fall sports recently started with football opening up strong with four wins and zero losses. And volleyball suffered success as well with six wins and nine losses. Cross country performed well with the men's team placing fourth and fifth in the first two meets, and beat Marshall yesterday as well. The women's team placed in seventh and eighth in the first two meets. Football has a big game coming up on Friday against Marshall. We hope to see you all there. At the start of the new school year, the new tardy policy was implemented, and the number of students in the hall after the bell are already decreasing. Teachers are also very appreciative now because they don't have to interrupt class to change the attendance if a student shows up late. The student body is also looking forward to homecoming. We hope to see everyone at parade and skit night on the twenty-eighth, and the game against Dodgeland the following Friday. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mateo.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for our members?
Could you repeat that part or explain it about students who could come in late?
So, new tardy policy has students who are tardy go to the office, to the tardy kiosk, punch in their number, and get a tardy pass. This automatically marks their tardy in Skyward, so when they do go to class, the teacher doesn't have to interrupt their teaching to update attendance.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mateo? Thank you. Moving right along, we'll go to administrative reports. Uh, first is Mr. Bartelt to report on the start of school and fundraisers and overnight field trips. You have the floor, Mr. Bartelt.
Good evening. Did you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Mateo, for updating the board on what the student body's been up to over summer and the first, uh, week and a half of school. Just to add on to that, so we just had a new process with our tardies. So, there is a tardy kiosk. The students aren't in class by the bell. They're not allowed into the classroom. They have to come to the office, punch in their lunch code. It prints off a pass, and then it automatically updates it in Skyward like Mateo was saying. And it's been pretty efficient so far. Students are hustling the class, and we've seen, I don't have any hard data, but we've seen just less kids in our hallway to start the year, and we're getting to the instruction quicker, which is great so far. Hopefully, it continues. Um, other, uh, updates to start the school year. First off, just want to give a shout out to all of our high school students and staff. We were just recognized, um, by the US News and World Report as a top, uh, top forty percent high school in the USA. And there's many things they're taking into consideration for that, college readiness, data assessment, graduation rates. So, we were, I think it was one sixty of the high schools in the state of Wisconsin, number one sixty. Uh, I don't believe, in my time in Waterloo, we received this award, so that's a huge shout out to our students and staff for being recognized and getting that award. Besides that, to start the school year, we had class meetings to go through student handbook, expectations, policies, updates, so students know what to expect at that meeting. And then Mr. Popeklin talked with them as well. We broke that apart by grade level. And at that same time, we had another grade going through homecoming updates and signing up for activities. It's a fun time in high school when it comes to homecoming. So, Mrs. Holden and our class advisor did a fantastic job reading those meetings. Besides that, uh, we did have an old school assembly to start, kick off the school year, and there were some competitions, and points were awarded for homecoming, so we started that right off, um, the first day of school, just to get some excitement going on in our building. So, again, pretty eventful first couple of days, and now end of last week, this week, we are really getting into the swing of just the normal operations of our high school. The last thing with, uh, the beginning of high school, first couple of days, are there any questions about that?
Nope.
Perfect. And then I'll, I'll touch base on, uh, high school fundraisers and overnight trips. One thing that I want to touch on with our fundraisers is we really try to get on, on top of our staff and our coaches to make sure they have everything planned out for this entire school year, including that summer. I know last year, there were some fundraisers that were brought forth, um, you know, in the spring. That happens with coaches, our, our, you know, new coaches that gave over a program, but we're trying to get everything on the docket right now with those single fundraisers getting approved. So, from a fundraiser standpoint, there aren't a ton of, you know, kind of challenging, something really new. A lot of it has been done in years past with the fundraisers from our activities and our athletics. We always have the first one on there for Donors Choose, that's a normal classroom base. There hasn't been a whole lot of those. That does have to go through a process of being approved by admin first. Whereas a teacher looking to put something on, on Donors Choose, which is a website, they must work with the, um, the building administrator to get that worked out, because there are possibilities that we can help support them and not only having to go to Donors Choose ahead of time. Um, so from a fundraising standpoint, everything's in front of you. From an overnight trip from the high school, this is a reminder that every year, we do a domestic flight, one year, the following year, a domestic trip. It's in the US, and we did it last year to New York. This year, we have on the docket to do our, um, you know, overseas trip, but we're looking to do it in Italy. Mrs. Holden has started that, uh, the communication with that. Then we have our FBLA trips, and then wrestling, and FFA takes a lot of trips. We do try to limit any visiting any school, but sometimes that does happen when there is some travel in, with specifically our FFA trips. I will say our, um, trips that Miss Holden has, has taken in the past has not this school, the past three or four years, with flights, you never know nowadays, with cancellations going to our best women's who's missing class time. Um, are there questions about fundraisers or overnight trips from the high school?
Hey Sean, I guess I do have a question on the fundraisers. So in the list, in the list, you know, we have replace equipment, replace uniforms, et cetera, et cetera. Who makes the final decision on what gets replaced and what the money's spent on?
So, when it comes to fundraisers, so I will say, kind of, I'm going to answer a couple things. From a, like, jersey update, we're on rotation with our business office on what jerseys get updated every so ye- many years, but sometimes things happen where they need an extra jersey, so sometimes it goes towards that. But the final approval when it comes to this is the coaches work through Mrs. Dose and or Mrs., Mr. Schuster to make sure it's all worked out, and the money is going directly towards that. Um, they do have to provide proof of what they're purchasing when it comes to any fundraiser, and that approval process goes through that, goes through me, goes through our district office. So we always make sure that it's getting forwarded and going to the appropriate funds. Does that answer your question, Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Sean.
Yep.
Uh, moving next to Ms. Zeeman to talk also about the start of school and fundraisers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, and first, I want to say that I want to send out a huge shout out to Mrs. Deppi in the pre-k office, um, with all of her hard work, getting the schedules ready, lockers ready, registration, et cetera, and so forth. We had a very smooth start to the school year. Uh, teachers were ready for open house, and we had a really good turnout for open house. We got to see a lot of families. On Monday, we had our staff PBIS kickoff, our faculty meeting introducing PBIS to all of the staff. And yesterday, Mr. Thorson led an assembly for all students five eight to pick up our pirate games. So, we are ready and rolling, and, um, everybody is where they need to be and having a great time already so far. Any questions on the beginning of the school year for five eight? All right. So on to our fundraisers. We do not have any new, um, fundraisers to add this year, other than Crew has changed up some of the fundraising that they are going to do. This year, they are going to do Butterbraids and Berry Brothers Coffee in the fall. Um, this summer, they did a school supply fundraiser for families, and, um, they also have, um, on their fundraiser that they are accepting general donations. Otherwise, uh, Mrs. Meyer's fundraiser is the same as last year, and Student Council will do various fundraisers throughout the year, such as candy grams and, uh, penny whoppers and things like that.
All right, any questions on fundraisers? Middle school. Thank you, Ms. Zeeman.
All right, thank you.
Go to Ms. Beacon to talk about the start of school and fundraisers.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
So my, I'll start with fundraisers, because our, mine are very similar and the same ones that Christine just talked about, with the addition of the school garden fundraiser that I sometimes do during, um, family nights or, um, things like that, just to, we, we kind of have pickets that families can decorate, and that money goes to our school garden, and those pickets are out by the school garden. So, that's the only different fundraiser than what Christine has already mentioned. Does anyone have any questions about that?
I don't believe so.
All right. Well, then I can talk about our first days of school and pre-k for. We are absolutely, uh, just an amazing bunch of teachers and students, and we also had a really great, um, open house night with our families and meeting all of our, um, our new families in four K. And really, we've just been doing such a great job. Our teachers and kiddos just learning those new routines, knowing where to line up, you know, that sort of thing, and where to meet in the morning. So all of that, you know, first couple of days of school work is really, it's hard, and our teachers were really hard down at the elementary school to make sure that all the kiddos in Waterloo feel safe and ready to, to be at school. So I can't say enough great things about the staff that we have, and, and I would say the same thing that Christine said about our office staff. Sarah Deppi is amazing, and he does make this amazing as well. I did ask my teachers if anyone had anything specific they wanted to share with the board about our first couple of days in school, and, um, Leslie Fugue, um, is doing a really great job of introducing our second graders to their Chromebooks. And she was talking about how they are doing a really good job of being able to log into their Chromebooks and, and being able to use them. This is their first year. They moved from iPads to Chromebooks in second grade, so she's going to get a great job with them. Jenny Porter, our new, um, elementary, um, library teacher, was talking about, she says the library has been a buzz with Mrs. Porter. Each month, there will be a new author spotlight display in the hallway. For the month of September, students are being introduced to books by David Shannon. A Bad Case of Stripes by David Shannon was a perfect way to pick up this school year. And library classes for the first week, students focused on book care skills, and have really shown a great understanding of how we take care of our library books. A variety of books have been read, and those people are just sitting in the hallway on our Book What We've Read display. It seems to be a great way to spark conversations about wonderful books to enjoy from our library. She invites students to the library and take a look at her displays and, uh, things that are going on in the elementary library. There's Schneider, one of our, our veteran, um, first grade teachers, amazing, said that during the first six days of school, we did our projects, practiced our routines and procedures, went to the cabinet all over the building, started learning our literacy and math centers, began all of our curriculum work this week, and did one surprise extra recess after we chose the red. She said first grade is off to a fantastic start. First grade would also like to know if anyone in from administration or the school board is interested in being a guest reader. So please contact first grade teacher if you'd like to be a guest reader and help our beginning reader. One of our new second grade teachers, Allison Hopper, said that during the first week of school, she read First Day Jitters, and the students had jitter juice to drink. She said they put sprinkles in the juice. Students wrote about how they felt at school on the first day of that week, and they're still talking about jitter juice this week. Asking for it after. So those are just a couple of our teachers and stuff, things that they have to say about what's going on down at the elementary school. But we're really off to a really great start. Some really great veteran teachers and new teachers in, in... Any questions for us, all right?
Yeah, I have to say, um, Holly, I really appreciate you being out there every day as well, um, and being able to greet the kids and all the teachers that make their way out there. It's really nice. There's a lot, a lot of support, um, out there that I see every day, so it's really nice and refreshing, so, yeah.
Yeah, yes, it's my favorite times of day, so. Any other questions? I would love to see you all as guest readers, so I would come and listen to your readers talk, so feel free to let us know.
We duly know it.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Beacon.
Thanks, guys.
Brings us to Ms. Arma Trout to talk about book study.
Hello, everyone. I am super pumped. I wrote myself a note. I'm, I'm going to be a first grade guest reader, so I'm, I'm excited to be here in the African community. Um, I want to echo everyone's sentiments about the first weeks of school, but I look about my position as being able to get, um, across the entire, um, span of the building so that I can see all levels, and it has been a really amazing, um, first several days. So my shout out is going to go to our paraprofessionals, who, as Sarah mentioned, are some of the staff that you see reading and supporting students before school, um, but also just again, um, pre-k through high school. We have an amazing pair of professionals that support, um, all of our students, and so, um, I, I send out my gratitude and appreciation, um, to them. So, moving on to our book study, I, I know Suzie did me a paper and brought the books up. I don't know if they're distributed. Um, but we wanted to offer an opportunity to the board, oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, we wanted to offer the opportunity to the board, um, for anybody that's interested to, um, to join us in, um, our experience with Yes We Can, um, which is a book study that your administrative team is, uh, participating in. We started this summer, um, and really, um, you know, Waterloo has had a focus on being a clean, clean in order to help ensure that all students are clean to the highest levels. So this book really focuses on how we collaborate between our, um, general educators and special educators, um, to really work hard to bridge achievement gaps and make sure that all of our students are learning to the highest levels. Um, so it's been, it's been a nice experience. We're, we're beginning, um, chapters. I think we're maybe three chapters in. Um, but the team has divided, um, the book, and Luke is leading a chapter, um, determining, leaving quotes, leaving discussion, uh, questions, and then what are the takeaways and implications to our practice. So, you know, we read it, but what are we going to do about it? And so it's just been a really nice opportunity, um, for us as a team. Any questions?
Any questions for our members? Nope. Is it appearing to any?
Great.
Hey, can we shout?
Thank you.
All right, we move right along. Uh, we will go to the approval of bills and vouchers, uh, in the treasures report. Uh, the superintendent's listing of disbursements through August thirty-first, and the district receipts. Are there any questions that were not answered prior to the meeting? Or questions for Suzie in regards to any of the reports?
Oh, I read it over the, uh, website the best I could, and all makes sense to me. The best it can without being the one to plug in the numbers. Little caveat there.
I am looking for a moment.
Cummings will make a motion to approve the bills and vouchers that are listed and have been listed.
I'll second that. All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Yurgis. And just to clarify, you're looking to approve the treasures report, the superintendent's listings of disbursements, and the district receipts through the month of August.
That's correct.
All right, we'll be, roll call vote. Crave, yes.
Quammy, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Yes.
Yurgis, yes.
All right, motion carries on a six oh vote. Legislative updates. Any board members have a legislative update to share, or the administrator? Nope. We're still on alert here, uh, with the government, so keep your awareness up, I guess. Uh, announcements, uh, I had to scribble down, and Mr. Bartelt had already mentioned it, but, uh, I would like to extend a congratulations to the high school for being recognized by US News as one of the best high school, uh, in the top forty percent across the nation. Uh, it's very good to see some, uh, positive rankings for Waterloo High School. And again, in the top forty percent of the nation, uh, we should feel good about having a, a warm, neat high school in Waterloo, Wisconsin. We go to, uh, public inputs. Is there anyone who wishes to provide public input this evening? Hearing none, we're going to move right into new business. So our action item A, staff positions, is listed in your board informer packet. There's one position that's put forward for approval. Barbara Grossman in food service, part-time position.
I also move for approval.
Cummings will second.
And motion by Mr. Crave, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the staff positions as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries on a six oh votes vote. Action item B, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four overnight field trips. We have the listing in the board packet. Uh, Mr. Bartelt spoke about the overnight field trips. Is there any further discussion in regards to the overnight trips? Plan for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
I'll move to approve the overnight field trips as presented.
Cummings will second.
Got a motion by Ms. Quammy, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four overnight field trips. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, six oh votes vote. Brings us to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fundraisers.
Cummings will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fundraisers.
Quammy will second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this motion? As we move right into the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries on a six oh votes vote. Uh, action item D, we have the, in front of us, uh, in your packets, the second reading policies, uh, the nine thousands. They're listed out. You have a full listing of policies in your packet. Again, second reading. Are there any questions or discussion regarding the said policies? Just as a reminder, through our current policy guidelines, be in the second reading. This goes through the second reading, they would then go on the docket. Again, we're not fully adopting any of the new policies until we are completed the entire review and at the end of the year. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was just, little bit questionable, you know, when I see the status on these, uh, policies, some say Neola, some don't say anything. Some say, uh, like Scott Brown. Are those the ones that are changed, or the ones that... If you look at the status.
Sure.
Some say from Neola, and some would say Scott Brown, and then some are blank.
I, yeah, I'm not sure if there's a difference. No, I'm sorry. Um, where's the status from Neola? Some say it's not known, some say it's...
Some are blank, they don't say anything.
I, I am not sure.
Because I think that, I'm sorry, the code has like the edits and stuff. I almost feel like it may not mean anything. It's like my first...
Reaction to it?
Right, right, because the, the code has where it's...
Or certain ones, or there's certain ones that are changed, or there's some that are the same.
So like if you look at...
Yeah, I think the codes that are having that Scott, that Scott name in there, it's, and then their...
Did you? What do you think?
Or like the status was nothing, but the code is just a...
Oh, uh, so, um, there's no page now. But it's number.
But it's number, but this is the one thousands.
Yeah, if you're looking at like the one thousands, there's a uh.
Well, if you look at nine thousand, it's uh P O nine one one one, B K Scott review.
Those, those are the notations are where there's, where there's.
Changes.
Change changes, yep.
And then the other ones from Neola, that means they went over them, they're okay.
Well, we went over all of them and about those came right up here. But like if there's some update, like this one has um P O one 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 zero asterisk V H, new edits in parentheses as part of the code. So they go with the one that kinda had some changes that are put in there.
Yeah, it's literally crossed out, yeah.
The edits are still visible in the policy. And we're just approving the language, th- this won't technically be the final post review, they'll they'll clean that up. But I believe it's just notating we made a change, it's just that Neola. And we didn't make any revisions or throughout the review, didn't make any revisions, it's just the standard Neola policy.
And so ones you made are good and done are the ones that say like Scott Brown.
In like this uh nine thousand relations, you can see what was struck.
Right.
In the middle, yes. The edits should remain on the policy of what we changed.
And the code for just where you can see the edits that are made, that's where it's going.
Part of the tracking.
And the second reading will just be those edits of the old that are crossed out.
Once the final approval comes through, so our current policy says we do a first reading, then a second reading, then it goes to a final. But the final version will be clean and what we actually publish.
Okay.
And the final version will come as a full packet, right?
All of them at the end of the.
Yes, yeah, it's a first and second reading and a meeting and then everything will come together.
Correct. Yeah, we got a long way to go.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Well, I would move to approve policies nine one 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 through nine eight zero zero dot zero one for the second reading. Cummings will second.
Got a motion by Ms. Quanmi, seconded by Ms. Cummings to approve the uh, excuse me, to approve the policies listed here as they're in second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh voice vote. Action item E, that's the first reading of policies eleven hundred through sixteen sixty-two. Um and the policy committee members can also speak on this, but again, as we went through these, um again, this is a bunch of still boiler plated, I would say, policies. We're not getting into the uh interactive policies, if you will, just yet. So, but there is a number of things covered, I think we had minimal, we had some changes, but they were rather minimal uh of what we put through, but again, some of the policies here are new outside of what we currently have, they're just a bit more thorough. Part of the reason why we went this route. But uh I will note, as we move forward to next, the upcoming meetings, I think we have maybe one more meeting where we're we're still on boiler plate type policies, but then I would ask that the full board sits at the committee meetings so we can hash through these curri- curriculum-based policies, et cetera, the things we're gonna weigh in on and really lay the groundwork down for what we want to do.
One of the policies that was a bit of a surprise was the fact that there's one that pertains to genetic information. So genetic information cannot be shared in a nutshell. I had never given that much thought before.
And we did add sub-language in policy one one zero zero about goal setting for the board. That was.
Yeah, more of a structure for the board to set and execute some goals with a timeframe. And we align that with the, uh we tried to strategically align that with the review of our administrators. If you go through contracts and set their goals, we'll then set the board goals. Just give it some more structure.
I'd motion to approve first reading policies one hundred through sixteen sixty-two.
All right, will second. Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Craig, s- excuse me, motion by Mr. Cummings, geez. I can't talk, I'm tied up. I got a motion by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve the first reading of policies eleven hundred through sixteen sixty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh voice vote. Action item F, we go to W W A S P Region Twelve, uh school board. It was convention, but it's a regional meeting and workshop. It's listed as October twelfth, it is in some prairie, is that West High School? Uh I don't know if anyone has been, have been to one of these, Jimmy, have you been to one of these in La Pas? No?
I haven't, I haven't had the first class on board.
So I I can tell you the last time, uh I'm sure we get, could get a tour of the new high school, which is fun. Uh the last time I went to was in Verona, which is more like a college campus the size of that school, I'm sure this is very similar. Uh but you say go through uh different sessions, et cetera, so if someone wishes to enroll, you can contract, contact, excuse me, our administrative staff at the school and they can get you enrolled. But again, that October twelfth is coming fast. And by all means, all board members are more than welcome to attend.
I'd like to mention I cannot attend on the twelfth, I was looking at my calendar. Some other dates appear perhaps more feasible, I know Brookfield is an hour drive or fifty-five minutes, but I might head to Brookfield. So if anyone is interested, there's two dates for Brookfield, they are both open for me.
Okay. Yeah, and there's an online one on November first too, you can't attend. So it's an option, but it's the six P M registration and networking and there's a six thirty dinner. And the regional meeting program is seven, eight thirty, where they also recognize school board members for uh certain tenure on the board. There is a pre-regional workshop, meeting workshop as well, starts at four. So again, if you would like to attend and we want that set up for you, please contact the school administration staff. Uh hopefully we got our calendars with tonight, we're looking at next, a building and grounds meeting. So as it's listed in our uh informer, we have budgetary information, so we'd like to get on the slates here for a late October or early November meeting. What works best for you guys? Again, all board members are welcome to come, but the committee attendees are myself, Mr. Sets and Mr. Yurgis.
Anytime after the sixteenth. September thirty-first.
In October?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm thinking we should have it later, I think in November.
Okay.
Make sure the budget's set and everything.
Yeah.
Budgets in October is in finally.
Yeah, I I feel like that meeting is like the twenty-third or thirty eighth or seventh or something after the, for the levy.
Right. And next, not to get off topic, next Friday is our count?
Third Friday or sixth?
The student count is this Friday.
This Friday.
Yeah.
Okay, time flies, we gotta find. Uh I would be fine, you wanna just tentatively do, uh could go November sixth? That's Monday night?
Okay.
Time flies to six P M?
Sure.
Do I go five thirty?
Sure.
I think it's later, later, so.
Well, what's set it then for uh the sixth? November sixth at five thirty?
That be here or the street of office?
I think we'd start here and then if we have to do any touring or whatever, we can just stay for here.
Don't interfere with pickleball, will it, Jim? Probably during the morning, sure, you were way out there.
All right, so moving right along, uh the next item for discussion is a curriculum committee meeting. And that is Ms. Cummings, Ms. Quanmi and Mr. Perry, not here. But also looking to get a meeting on the books.
During November.
They want it prior to the November board meeting.
So the November board meeting would be? The eighth or the fifteenth?
Maybe the eighth.
Eighth, so we would want to do it.
Could go.
Week of the thirtieth, twenty-third, sixteen.
What do you wanna do?
I'm pretty open, those last, those, the week, first week of November, last week of October.
Where about like the twenty-third week?
So remember the twenty-third, we have a meeting. No, I'm sorry, we're talking, I was talking October, I'm sorry.
We're talking October.
I, yeah, I'm talking about October, hi.
So the twenty-third, we have our regular school board meeting, sets a tax limit on the twenty-third, that's six thirty P M.
Okay. You tell me, if they want it in October, Susan, when, when does it work for you?
How about the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Monday, the thirtieth?
Cause Halloween's the thirty-first, we are gonna be trick-or-treating on that Sunday, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
The thirtieth would be fine.
What's your preferred time?
Um six thirty is fine, that's a good time for me. Okay.
All right, November thirtieth, excuse me.
Hopefully it works for Bill.
October thirtieth?
October thirtieth, yeah, October thirtieth, six thirty.
Six thirty, yeah, perfect. All right, that would move us through all our business schedule for this evening.
I'll move to the, I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Sets, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, for adjournment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh voice vote. Let the record show, it's seven twelve P M. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.